The first thing in Virginia this morning is a public hearing. This public hearing now by Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called an order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulations. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held via video teleconference. Instructions on making written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. Oral statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. All statements will become part of the hearing record. There is one agreed board order to be reviewed today. Would the staff please present the amended agreed order with American Synthetic Rubber Company? Mr. Grevette?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district begs for the board's consideration and agreement with American Synthetic Rubber Corporation, which operates a chemical plant in the area of Louisville known as Rubber Town. The plant uses a coal-fired boiler to generate steam for various processes pursuant to its Title V permit. The proposed agreement serves to resolve a notice of violation alleging violations with the operation of a spray reactor uses an emissions control on their coal-fired boiler. The district alleges that the company experienced a series of upset conditions and malfunctions of the spray reactor control system on their coal-fired boiler during a period from December 27th, 2022 through January 19th, 2023, which resulted in excess hydrogen chloride and sulfur dioxide emissions. The emissions released during the events caused the control efficiency for sulfur dioxide to drop below the 90% level required in the Title V permit. The emissions of hydrogen chloride, which are determined using sulfur dioxide as a surrogate, exceeded the standard of 16.26 parts per million. Each of these limits are based on 30-day rolling averages and were over the standard for a little over a month. Additionally, District Regulation 1.07 requires the reporting of the start, end, and follow-up of each excess emission event. During the review of these events, the district determined that the company had not submitted eight of these reports in the required timeframes. The company has completed corrective actions for these violations and agreed to pay $76,500 to resolve the notice of violation. The district provided a 30-day public comment period on this proposed agreed board order from February 7th to March 8th, 2024, and did not receive any comments. The district recommends the board adopt the order as proposed.
Thank you. Ms. King, as our representative of American Synthetic Rubber Company, register to make a statement? Thank you. Please step to the podium and state your name and affiliation.
Gregory Dutton, I'm an attorney with Cross-Promised Health here on behalf of American Synthetic Rubber Company. Through continuous improvement, the company is committed to achieving the lowest possible emissions of the time. Despite the extraordinary coal conditions that initiated this process, the plan is taking necessary actions to safeguard against another occurrence in the future. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. King, has any member of the public registered to make an oral statement? Ms. King, has any member of the public submitted a written statement?
I might miss somebody.
Go for it. Please step to the podium and state your name and affiliation.
Yeah, morning. I'm Dr. Megan Poole, University of Louisville, and I help run the air justice project. Thanks to APCD Board for holding space for public comment. It's important to know when companies have not held themselves to the air quality standards deemed safe by APCD and the Clean Air Act. Accidents happen, this we know, but when accidents become habitual, when emissions are perpetually in excess of established thresholds, when companies like American Synthetic Rubber have a history of violating air quality standards and disregarding public health and safety, then we must seriously consider how business as usual is being conducted, not just at ASRC, but here. In this case, American Synthetic Rubber reported releasing hydrogen chloride and sulfur dioxide at at least 150% above standard from December 2022 to February 2023. And we're taking their word for those numbers, I assume. So three main questions here today. What corrective actions has ASRC taken since this violation? How are they ensuring that future violations never occur? ASRC still uses and has permits to continue using coal-fired boilers in their processes, which suggests that there's no evidence that this company intends on changing their processes to better ensure the safety of the individuals living on the fence line. Second main question. How are the potential health issues posed to the community assessed in this case? These chemicals are toxic and have been statistically linked to shortness of breath, nausea, and vomiting, alterations to smell, swelling, and inflammation, especially in the lungs. Because ASRC is not alone in Rubber Town, but contributes to a cumulative effect of toxic air pollution, we also cannot consider these chemicals as if they exist alone. The environment around Rubber Town results in cancer, heart attacks, stroke, asthma, emphysema, and an overall decreased lifespan of upwards of a decade for the residents who live next door. So this fine is admittedly harsher than past fines, but how is this board being placed into relation with the medical bills that may have stemmed from increased hospitalizations or doctor visits due to increased emissions in this timeframe? Does this fine hold a company whose annual revenue is $35 million accountable? That's what we hear from residents at town hall and school functions. Residents want you all to hold their polluting neighbors accountable. This fine doesn't do that. I've shared why before, but we're here again, so I'll mention it again. Statistically, fines for violating environmental laws vary depending on the racial characteristics of the communities in which companies are located. That's directly from environmental sociologist Dorsetta Taylor, who uncovers that mean fines are lowest in black census tracts. Further still, Taylor finds that penalty amounts decreased as the percentage of black individuals in the census tracts increased. We know ASRC borders an area of the city populated predominantly with black residents and by residents who experience poverty. So this fine isn't enough because this amount does nothing to a $35 million bottom line. One former employee of a chemical facility recently shared with me that according to his memory, companies like ASRC budget for violations like these. So these violations raise questions about whether these low fines are not also intentional by design. We know where facilities are sited are by design, are the same designs at play here today. APCD is under the umbrella of economic development, not health or sustainability. Is this fine intending to hold industry accountable, or is it serving some other purpose? Third main question, which is really a series of questions about transparency and communication. Why are we hearing about these excess emissions now, over a year after these emissions occurred? Or residents notified of these emissions before now? And I'm not talking about an excess emissions dashboard hidden behind layers of governmental webpages that no one visits. I'm not even talking about an email newsletter that only a few thousand people in the city are sent up to receive. My students this semester just finished an Environmental Justice Committee Act, and they reported experiencing major existential crises afterward. Their whole sense of the environments we live in and the way we do business shifts when they realize just how much they don't know about what companies like ASRC do to residents in cities. To quote one student from yesterday, "How can they get away with just not telling us? How do we not know when this stuff happens?" So I'll pose those questions to you all today. How did ASRC notify residents back in 2022? How did APCD notify audiences back when this violation occurred? This issue is one of opacity, of what is withheld, if not kept hidden, from everyday residents, from those who don't have research gigs like mine, from those who don't benefit from student teams who generously give up their pre-time to wade through governmental websites to make it easier to engage with environmental justice issues, from those who don't know about open records requests and the layers of bureaucracy that surrounds but impacts their health, from those who work a traditional nine-to-five and who can't be with us here at 10:00 a.m. on a Wednesday morning. Here's what I'm saying. Excess emissions in the city are habitual. The recent health equity report proves that health outcomes in the Rubber Town corridor are worse today than they were a decade ago, and the conversations continue to be largely inaccessible to local communities. And some agreed board orders like this one aren't enough, not just monetarily, but holistically. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. King, has any member of the public submitted a written statement? Are there any members of the public in the S room that wish to make a comment? If so, please approach the podium. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference should be called upon. This is a feature you can find on the participants list or by pressing star three. Join me by phone and you'll be called upon. Ms. King? Anybody?
I see no answers.
Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Please step to the podium. State your name and affiliation.
My name is Jen Watkins. I'm a geographer and I live in District 6. I'm here as a citizen of Louisville, and I would just like to ask a clear question about the line that's being discussed today. How do we quantify the level of harm that has been done to this community over a year? How do you come to the number of $75,000? Who decided that that number was a reasonable amount of money for a multimillion dollar company to pay out for this kind of mistake or accident or oversight?
Ms. Hamilton?
Well, thank you. There are a few things that I'd like to address. Thank you so much. So to begin, the Air Pollution Control District is a feature of the Commonwealth. We are housed not under economic development, but under the Public Health and Public Services Council or Committee at Metro Government. So our work is aligned with public health. The way that we develop our civil penalties is by using US EPA's civil penalty policy. It uses a matrix of extent of harm and extent of deviation. This is what's deemed a high priority violation by US EPA. So in applying that policy and the violations that occurred here, the civil penalty of $102,000 was calculated. There is a reduction offered here for settlement that takes into account the potential costs of litigating to be settled here. And so that is included in this instance. With respect to this violation and understanding it, our gentleman, I'll rely on my air pollution control officers to assist me here. The company has continuous emissions monitoring systems, so that in real time, we know what their emissions are and are able to, in this case, assess a civil penalty based on that extent of harm, which the standard, as I recall, is based on the percent over the requisite standard. So that's basic genesis.
Mr. King or Mr. Grevette, would you have? I think I covered it. Thank you. Any question by board members? Hearing none, that concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting this morning. We will now follow the record meeting of the Louisville Air Pollution Control Board Order. We're conducting the monthly board meeting via video teleconference. To determine if there is a form, we'll call, conduct a roll call of board members that are present on this teleconference. When I call your name, please say here. Jeffrey Coburn?
Here.
Josephine Ben? Candace Shob White?
Here.
Marissa Neal?
Here.
Charlie Bell?
Here.
Sajad Jamil? We do have a form present. Ms. Hamilton, we have introductions this morning.
Dr. Jamil is on the, I don't believe he was unmuted for recognition. Dr. Jamil?
Is he on the screen?
Not yet. That is definitely so. So I can take a track here.
Okay. Introductions.
It is with great pleasure this morning that I introduce to the board Ms. Carla Jones, APCD's new executive administrator. Ms. Jones joins us from Metropolitan Government of Nashville in Davidson County, where she served as senior finance officer. She holds an MBA from Bethlehem University. We are extremely grateful that she's joined us.
Welcome to the group. Looking forward to your contribution. Public recognitions.
Several. First, I'd like to recognize Shannon Hosey, who has accepted the position as supervisor in our industrial permitting program. Shannon has her master's in electrical engineering from the University of Louisville Speed School and has worked for the last 15 years, in addition to the permitting work, as the district's training coordinator, working with US EPA and our multi-jurisdictional, sorry, multi-jurisdictional organizational partner, Metro Force S.S.R., who serves the 10 Southeast states and 17 local air pollution control agencies, make sure that our new staff receive necessary training and that current staff stay up to date on new regulatory programs and policies. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Second, Jesse Carpenter, APCD Quality Assurance Coordinator, who will be leaving APCD while this is bittersweet, she'll be joining Marama. This is the multi-jurisdictional organization that serves the Mid-Atlantic region, and she and her family are going to relocate to Hampshire. Ms. Carpenter, who received her bachelor's in economics and her master's from California Polytechnic State University in city and regional planning, has done exceptional work in helping the district demonstrate the validity of our air monitoring that they think of. She will be with us.
Congratulations on your job. Sorry to see you go.
Our loss is Marama's gain. We're glad that she's going to continue working in air quality and that we will seek her again as we do national work together. Finally, this one is sad. Robert, you'll join me up here.
You're down. Stand up here.
After 39 years, Robert is going to be leaving the district. He has served capably as APCD's field tech in implementing the district's program to regulate emissions from gas stations, a program that previously permitted the operation of stage-two bigger recovery systems and is now wound down. Robert leaves us as the last of the original gas guys. Those of you who've been around the district a long time know who I'm talking about, but his dedicated service and commitment to the community will continue since his daughter carries on that work to Metro Government and its residents, her work at the Southern Community Center. Robert, we will miss you.
Yeah. Robert, thanks so much for such a long career. Certainly appreciate all the work and good luck in your retirement. I hope it's retirement. Yeah. So 39 years is about. Anybody longer?
No, although.
More than there, of course. No, didn't really, well, thank you for your service.
For Dana Freeman, you have 38. The world is 10 ago.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the meeting that was conducted on February 21st. The meeting minutes were distributed electronically. Are there any changes to the meeting minutes on the board? Hearing none, those are approved or accepted. Moving to public comments. Ms. King, has anybody registered to make a comment this morning?
Anyone registered?
Has anybody provided a written comment?
Even a bit.
Are there any members of the public in the S room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference and you'll be called upon. This is a feature you can find on the participants list or by pressing star three. If you're on my phone, and you'll be called upon. Then?
You know him?
Okay. That completes the public portion of the meeting. Unfinished business, there is no unfinished business. And our new business is the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber. The district has recommended that the board adopt the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber. Is there a motion to adopt the agreed board order?
I have a motion to adopt.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the board? Hearing none, we will now take a roll call vote. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber Company and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn?
Yes.
Candace Shob White?
Yes.
Marissa Neal?
Yes.
Charlie Bell?
Yes.
Sajad Jamil, did he make it? Have not? I vote yes. The agreed order with American Synthetic Rubber Company is adopted. There are no committee reports since our last meeting. We're at the director's podium, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips. On March 18th, several of APCD's managers and myself attended the Louisville Metro Government Career Fair, which was held at the Jordan Track and Field Learning Center. More than 500 people came out during the day. It was really an amazing opportunity to get to meet people who were interested in working for Metro Government and many who were very interested in the district's work. Unfortunately, we didn't have any open postings, but we do expect to have our regulatory coordinator position posted in the coming weeks. And then we will see additional positions as retirements take place and also as staff move into new leadership positions.
Do you collect resumes?
Absolutely.
For that purpose? Thank you.
It was stunning, the number of people who had just extraordinary experience. Some, not so much for air pollution, but I've been able to share those with directors of other programs and hope to see some of those folks actually working for Metro Government soon. We previously discussed House Bill 136, which would extend KRS 224.1040, the evident sharing privilege for environmental audit reports, to the district. It was amended in House Energy and Natural Resources Committee to revise the definition of a pattern of violation to be more consistent with the definition used in US EPA's policy. And it has been passed over now to the Senate Committee. It is now scheduled for passage in the regular orders of the day on Friday, March 22nd, 2024. Thereafter, we send to the governor for his signature. Any questions about House Bill 136? On March 1st, the Louisville Metro Office of Sustainability submitted a priority climate action plan for the metropolitan statistical area, which includes Louisville and 11 surrounding counties in Kentucky and Indiana. This is an initial step. It will be followed on April 1st by requests for funding under the Climate Pollution Reduction Grants Program Implementation Grants Demo Competition. So there's about $4.6 billion available, and the Office of Sustainability's plan is very broad. And so I think that we'll see a lot of good funding, good projects coming our way.
So they take the lead for the area, including Southern D.M. and Central Counties?
Yes. This area, the metropolitan statistical area, because of its size, was awarded an initial $1 million non-competitive grant in order to do this work that went to the Office of Sustainability. Internally, I'd like to thank APCD Assistant Director Michelle Kane for her work with the Office of Sustainability on this plan. Greenhouse gas productions incentivized through these grants reduce global emissions of greenhouse gases and potential local impacts of climate change. More immediately, those same reductions also reduce criteria pollutants. So I'm especially grateful for Miss King's expertise and understanding of criteria, pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions, and how air quality is impacted here in Louisville. Many of you on the board may remember that back in 2021, we amended our Risk Management Plan Program, also known as the Chemical Accident Prevention Plan Program. To adopt some changes that had been proposed by US EPA is necessary to strengthen the program, but not adopted. So this board took that leadership step and adopted those provisions. The district is one of nine states, one of the only local programs across the nation who retain delegation of the Risk Management Plan Program. Elsewhere in Kentucky, that plan is in the nation. That program is actually implemented by US EPA. Given the sources that we have here in Louisville, we believe it's important to retain this program. EPA on March 1st finalized amendments to the Risk Management Plan Program at the federal level. Many of those are to adopt provisions which this board has already adopted, but there are some additional provisions that appears to have been included. We're reviewing that, and we will be coming back to the board with full information about how that new federal program compares to our regulatory program and whether or not additional amendments would be necessary for us to undertake. Any questions? All right, moving on. Lawn Care for Cleaner Air. Chairman Sullivan mentioned, as we came in, that yesterday we've had an opportunity to go out and meet the mayor and others at his weekly press conference at the Alberta O. Jones Park. It was cold yesterday, but it was brilliantly beautiful out there. For those of you who have not seen the new Alberta O. Jones Park, it's beautiful. Phase one has been completed, and they're getting ready to work on phase two. It's just over here in Calipoli, our hill neighborhoods. It's going to be an amazing showcase. That said, the reason we were there, not just to enjoy the cold this morning, but was to announce this year's Lawn Care for Cleaner Air Grant Reward to Parks Alliance. They are the ones who spearheaded the park and its construction along with the community. The grant is a relatively new addition to the Lawn Care for Cleaner Air Program, and it provides a package of professional-powered electric lawn equipment to value to local organizations like the Parks Alliance in recognition of their commitment to sustainability. Since the Lawn Care for Cleaner Air Program has started, it's issued over 12,000 total rebates, keeping nearly $5 million of pollution from Louisville's air, civil penalties to fund this program. I'd like to recognize Ms. King and Bradley Holmes, who joined us yesterday, along with Matt Mudd, for their leadership in implementing and expanding the impact of this program. And if the board will permit me here, I'd also like to recognize that it was also a privilege yesterday to celebrate Women's History Month with the mayor. Alberta O. Jones was a groundbreaking graduate of the University of Louisville's Brandeis School of Law, becoming in 1959 the first black woman to sit for the bar in Commonwealth Kentucky. After a brief but impactful career as an attorney, she actually drafted one of Muhammad Ali's first boxing contracts. She was murdered in 1965. A picture of Ms. Jones hangs in the hallway. At the Brandeis School of Law, and I was privileged to pass it during my time there. It's also a privilege to learn of her life and of her leadership and legacy. Her family joined us yesterday, as did this year's first-ever national championship-winning Simmons College Women's Basketball Team and Dr. Beverly Gaines, a distinguished pediatrician and community leader who was recognized for her more than 40 years of dedicated service in Louisville. Thank you. This next one is a bit of a heads up. This was slightly unusual, so I'll bring it to the board today. On February 29th, US EPA announced that they will be finalizing new standards to address greenhouse gas emissions from the power sector. They proposed these regulations back in May of last year, and they've now announced that they intend to fight climate pollution from existing coal and new gas-fired plants in two separate actions. We had expected a final package that would address both, and instead, they've now bifurcated. This is slightly unusual. And so what we'll see later in April are new regulations that will address emissions from coal-fired plants. And later, they would hope that they'll see these before the election, a suite of regulations that will address emissions from new natural gas-fired turbines.
So the April, it's been April, are the actual regulations, those regulations?
For coal-fired plants, right, that they've separated out those new natural gas-fired turbines. It's a little different. We've had a few conversations with some who are in DC about why EPA chose to do this. And I think part of it is that they had over 1.3 million comments, and they reached out and had additional conversations with stakeholders about how to provide additional reliability to the grid. So in recognition that electricity is a necessary modern life, that's just necessary for modern life, they're going to bifurcate those two so that all emissions can go ahead and get started while they finalize some additional provisions to the natural gas side. So they're holding them both up. We're going to go this way. We'll keep you up to date as. We'll keep you up to date as those go forward. I did want to note that House Joint Resolution 121 was proposed on March 6th in the House.
Here in Kentucky.
Here in Kentucky. And House Joint Resolution 121 would make Kentucky a sanctuary state from US EPA's overarching regulation of power plants, which these rules are going to. So that's not something you can do if the state doesn't break permits and regulate power plants, and if APCC doesn't break permits and regulate power plants using our federal partners' regulations, which we implement, that means folks have to go down to Atlanta.
So effectively, is that advocacy primacy of the state?
Well, yes, I would have called it that. There's some federalism issues at play there. You really can't get rid of federal law. It would just change who implements it and where you'd have to go in order to obtain a permit. So it hasn't moved forward. We'll let you know if it does. But at this point, Connor Giffen with the Courier-Journal did a really good article on it before last, so maybe I'll take a look at that. We'll send the link out to the board members later today along with the legislation. But at this point, it's there. So, I need to...
I have a question.
Go ahead. Representative Bush.
You know, I wonder, do you know what those new regulations are? In saying pounds per million BTUs for the coal plants and for the gas plants, and how do these differ from the Clean Power Plan, which was scrapped because of the Supreme Court rule?
Those are all really good questions, and I'm not going to give you an answer today, but we'll talk about it in a great time.
Okay.
But I will say that, you know, one of the things here that's important to remember is when we're talking about energy systems, they're not really geographically restricted. Their product goes everywhere. So managing them as EPA has previously proposed on a fleet-wide basis is important. So we look forward to seeing these rules and how they will be used to reduce greenhouse gas pollutants within the nation and within the Commonwealth. So we'll bring back that information as we learn more. Hopefully, there will be a comparison to the plans as they were proposed, so we can quickly pull that up for you.
Okay.
Okay. We will be holding a public hearing this Thursday night here in the Edison Center at 6:00 on a proposed permit. This is the natural gas-fired combined cycle turbine that will be installed at L.J. East Mill Creek Station. The board may remember that they recently passed a noise rec plan for this source, and that will be here again 6:00 on Thursday.
Yes. If I could just real quick, that also involves the retirement of two large coal-fired units. So we'll see a significant reduction to the plant's emissions. And the new turbine does contain a 1,000 pound per megawatt CO2 limit. That's from an existing rule that EPA has. The rules they're proposing would theoretically tighten those kind of limits. But this, it's one of the first permits I've worked on with a specific greenhouse gas limit in it.
Okay. Good, thanks.
All right, I'm going to move on to presentation and go ahead and just combine this in the Director's Report. Andy, if you could go ahead and pull that up. We've talked previously about February 7th, finalization of a well-considered particulate matter standard. That standard has moved from 9 micrograms per cubic meter to, I'm sorry, from 12 micrograms per cubic meter to 9. It has been published as of March 6th in the Federal Register. That's important because that's when our timeframes begin to start. Next slide, Andy. And as I go through this, I'm going to ask my APCD colleagues to jump in. Michelle, Steve, Matt, because this is all of our work. It touches on all of us here at the district, and hopefully we'll be able to answer all your questions on this one, Dr. Cumber. All right. Can do a little bit of background here. What contributes to poor air quality? Well, everything. It's not just stationary sources, as we learned from last summer. Natural sources also affect our air quality. There are also mobile source contributions, and then contributions from those smaller sources like area sources, including gasoline stations, which we've already talked about this morning. Next slide, please. In 1970, Congress charged US EPA with addressing the emissions of six ubiquitous pollutants. They're listed here. These are our criteria pollutants: carbon monoxide, lead, particulate matter, oxides of nitrogen, sulfur dioxide, and ozone. Clean Air Act is a remarkable continuous and work plan in that Congress requires US EPA to set the standards, and then requires state and local programs, the Missouri Air Quality Rooms, to develop the plans to reach those standards. Every five years or so, US EPA is required to use the best health-based science to confirm that the standards remain protected for human health and the environment. And we've seen this process just play out with the finalization of the new standard. Next slide, please. So in looking at our attainment status of these National Ambient Air Quality Standards, you'll see that with the exception of ozone, we are currently containment from 5 of the 6. Ozone is a bit of an outlier. We have applied for reconsideration from US EPA, but last summer we did see increase in ozone. Much of that was driven by those wildfires. We'll be preparing an exceptional event demonstration to account for those. That new next standard has gone into the Federal Register. It becomes effective 60 days from March 6th, which is why you're still going to see that 12-microgram standard represented here. And also, if you've looked in your air quality report, you'll note that we've added a note that recognizes the standard will be changing, but we're still measuring against a 12-microgram per cubic meter standard for this one. Next slide, please. Particulate matter is particularly insidious as a pollutant. It is a complex mixture of particles and liquid droplets. It's both a directly emitted pollutant, and then it is also subject to secondary formation from other chemicals as they pool in the atmosphere. They're both coarse particles, and here's PM10. EPA did not reconsider or revise the PM10 standard, nor did they revise the 24-hour fine particulate standard, 35-micrograms per cubic meter for PM2.5. Those are fine particles. And that recognizes that those fine particles, which pass your blood barrier, are very incandescent. We want to make sure that your short-term exposure doesn't create any health issues as well. For the annual average, that is what US EPA has strengthened, from 12-micrograms to now 9. Health effects from particulate matter agent aggravate asthma, decrease lung function, increase respiratory symptoms, irregular heartbeat, and heart attacks. Next slide, please. They come from a variety of sources, both primary and also secondary, as I've mentioned. Next slide, please. This is our particulate matter trend. And you can see there, the blocks represent when the standard has been strengthened. The blue standard is the 1997 PM2.5 standard. Red is our 2012 standard, and the red block represents none, where we're currently at today. So when you look at the trend there, you can see that we're currently below the current standard, but slightly above the none. Next slide, please. The publication in the Federal Register is an important event for us. Once finalized in 60 days, it sets the required timeframe that's required under the Clean Air Act for us and for EPA to act. So, once finalized on May 6th, the first thing that will happen, the air quality index will be adjusted to the new 9-microgram per cubic meter standard. PSD permitting will take this limit into account, which means that the best available control technology. Nationally, we'll be at that lower limit. One year from this May, recommended designations will be made to US EPA. This process of designating areas, I think, is best described sort of like this. We actually have states who will send their recommendations to US EPA using the 2021 to 2023 three-year design value data set. And they will describe those areas that are not meeting the current 9-microgram per cubic meter standard. US EPA will receive that, but look at the justifications that we have for why an area may need to be designated as attainment or not, and they'll do their own work. A year from then, they'll come out with their final designations. This is accompanied by a very comprehensive technical support document. And I really encourage people, when it comes out, to take a look at it, because what it will do for us in our Metropolitan Statistical Area is look at transportation-related impacts, the areas in which people actually come to Louisville for work. So they are contributing to the air pollution here. And they'll also look at our contribution on the monitors that are run by our counterparts in Barton, Old County, and Oldham County. So this is a pretty comprehensive process. That final designation will be based on the 2022 to 2024 Design Value Data Set. All non-attainment areas for particulate matter are initially designated as moderate. In late 2027, non-attainment area state implementation plans, or SIPs, are due. And that's where a non-attainment area will take a look at the obligations they have to meet that standard, put together the plan to bring the area back into... In 2029, nationally, all, everyone has to provide an infrastructure SIP. That is a demonstration that you have all the regulatory tools necessary to attain or simply maintain the attainment status. For moderate non-attainment areas, that attainment area deadline is 2032. Now, an area doesn't meet that, they will be bumped up to severe and get four additional years to try to come into compliance with that standard.
How often does data from years after 2024 get submitted? I mean, every year?
Oh, yeah.
So obviously, that gets incorporated as you run, as you run. So you're not being judged to all 2022 to 2024?
So our first look at our attainment status will come with the 2021 to 2023 data.
Okay.
The 2023 data set is due to USPA, quality-assured and validated as of May 1st each year.
Okay.
So because we will have another year of data by the time that EPA will be making its determination, they'll use that newer three-year design value of 2022 to 2024. Now, all of that data includes some data that will be adjusted to take into account regulatory adjustments made by EPA to the federal efficiency methodology used in the T640 continuous particulate matter monitor to more accurately count for temperature data, as well as confirming this meeting EPA's exceptional amendments rule.
My question is, so in 2026 and '27 to '28, does that data get incorporated?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an area issue. Once you're designated, that process ends. And then the work begins as required under the Clean Air Act. So for areas designated as non-attainment, that will begin the need to develop that state implementation plan that lays out the plan to reach attainment?
I was just going to add that we will have a new design value with each year, the new three-year data set. When we see that design value meets the standard, that's when we enter this SIPs, that will process the Director's Board was describing, to submit a request to redesignate the area based on that more recent three-year data set.
What Michelle said.
Yeah, I was clarifying. Every single year, there's a new design value based off the three-year rolling average. And if we ever, during the course of the process, are meeting the standard based off the updated design value, we can apply for redesignation.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Third. We got into the weeds.
I did. It's been that sort of day. I walked off without my computer at home, too. And that's one more.
Next slide, please. Are there any other questions before we move on? Let me ask that. Everybody okay? So Clean Air Act is really a very prescriptive plan. It sets out the timeframes, it sets up the things that we need to do. This is US EPA's projected attainment status as of 2032. And what you see there is that we're not shown as being in non-attainment as of 2032. In the regulatory impact assessment that EPA did for this rule, they evaluated areas across the nation, looking at our design values and also looking at the impact of regulatory efforts that are already underway, including efforts to reduce pollution from the transportation sector, which we see more and more contribution to our overall emissions inventory, as well as changes that are coming for those greenhouse gas, large greenhouse gas sources, which will in turn also reduce particulate matter. The Regional Haze Plan, the Neighbor Plans, those two are going to have significant reductions of coal-fired electric generating units. They are our largest source of particulate matter, single source here in Jefferson County. So, you know, EPA has estimated very large benefits from this rule. We will say, you know, you'll note, and it's a little hard to see there, but Indianapolis and Cincinnati are not projected to meet this rule by the deadline. And for those of you who follow the weird, weird things I like to hear, California hasn't met many of the last particulate matter standards. They have some areas that are still not beating the 97 standard. So this new standard will continue to challenge for them, and some other Western areas in the country. With that, this was finalized on March 6th, and at the same time, the group of states, including Kentucky, filed for reconsideration, UC Circuit. And their basis, it's a very short petition, actually is making this up. It consists of a front page. It consists of a back page. These are all the states who joined, and that's what a petition for reconsideration looks like. Their basis for asking for reconsideration of the PM2.5 rule is that it exceeds EPA's statutory authority and is otherwise arbitrary, gracious, and abusive discretion and not in accordance with law. So we'll keep the board updated as that legal work continues. But I need to let you know, those deadlines in the Clean Air Act, they can only be stayed by court, or EPA has an opportunity to extend them by a year. Otherwise, this is the work we have ahead of us. We're going to get started on working on that now. So, any questions?
But anytime, if I have a question, you should stay.
It's possible.
Well, that statement you just, your summary of that petition was short. If that's true, then all the previous standards were also. What was the phrase, against the law or the Constitution?
Arbitrary and gracious. They'll be, you know, if this is accepted, and that petition for reconsideration is accepted, they'll be breathing, and they'll lay out, you know, why they will be, this particular rule is overreaching. We've seen, you know, this is sort of the way it goes. A new standard or a new regulation is proposed, and then there's a legal action. Sometimes we see, you know, both sides.
And again, it all takes place in... Again, it all takes place in the District of Columbia Jury Station.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. With that, I'm going to, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our last thing on the agenda is the reports that were distributed electronically. And note, there is not an air toxic report this month, correct? Is there any comment on the air quality and reports on the stats report, access submission report or complaint summary? I noted that seems like there's a longer list of complaints, so if there's some change or the ability to do so is improved, maybe I'm wrong about that.
So we are seeing more complaints, you know, when temperatures start to increase, we get more complaints. We've had a few nice days. We also get more open burning complaints when people start cleaning up their yard, and so that list grows as weather changes.
Okay. Seemed like it jumped a bit this one. And then ozone starts this month?
March 1st.
March 1st. Okay. I'm not going to say we're looking forward to that, but we'll see. Any questions by board on that?
I have a question on this. I think there's in the air, it's pretty minor, but.
How about it?
Maybe someone could explain to me. On the column on the right, the number of months during the year where the monthly average is greater than the annual standard, which, of course, that's not legal, exceeds, but it's just for interest. And if I'm summing across, and some of them, it's not right, like the first, May 14, there's things.
Dr. Cumber, maybe because the number of months that they see this standard on base on the standard that was in play that year. So at one point, it was 15, then it dropped to 12.
Okay.
Well, we tried to explain it, and we go along, and then as this new standard takes place, we'll see that number.
That's changed in 2015. Okay. Right. It was pointed out earlier. Right. Okay. Thanks.
No problem.
Good. Thanks.
Any other questions by the board? If not, well, during this meeting, our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 17, at 10 a.m.